And everyone, welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Deacon George Yen of Saint Lawrence Catholic Church.
Let us pray. Lord, we are confident that you will always give us the resources necessary to do your will, but we do need your guidance to know your will, especially in the exercise of the authority you give us for the benefit of others. Thank you for your past instruction, and please continue to shepherd us in the right direction. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon Yen. We always appreciate your service. First order of business tonight will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on June 11th. Council, do you have any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes you'd like to mention? Okay, hearing of none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as submitted.
So moved.
Say it. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of those three meetings as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing of none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. I did invite Judge Russell to come tonight to talk about the, a couple of petitions that have been circulated and to clarify any information that people might have, and I, there's a flyer outside if you want to pick it up when you leave that goes over the petitions, and both petitions that have been circulated are approved. So, if you have any questions, you can reach out to him, his email and telephone number online, and I'll try to get it posted later, how to get in touch with him. So, both are approved. Thank you.
Mayor Wilson, was that your report?
Yes, because he was going to do the report, but...
Do you happen to know, just people have asked what the cost of that special election would be?
I don't know.
Okay. I had hoped to ask him that question.
Right.
I didn't know if he had shared it with you. Okay. All right, very well. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation regarding agenda items only. Items five and six are a public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to speak when we get to those items. If you would like to speak to items seven through 27, if you'll come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Probate's estimates for the cost of the election of a couple of weeks ago was somewhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Yes, sir.
My name is Glenn Barefoot, and I live at 607 Wood Lane Court. The reason I'm coming up here, I'm not sure what agenda number it is, but the rate increase at the Fairhope docks. I, I don't know, I've been at the docks for a year and a half now. I'm in Slip 20 down by the shrimp boats. Prior to now, I've been paying five dollars a foot, you know, and I think, I think that was a fair rate at the condition of the slips down there, and the fact that, you know, really during the winter months, you can't get a boat in and out of there. I was asked probably, I think Nancy Bell called me, maybe October last year, I was nice enough to pull the boat out so they were doing some work down there and didn't bring it back in until April, which is fine, I've got a trailer, I can put the boat on. I use the facilities, me and a few others, you know, the shrimpers, the loopers, the livaboards, transient people, I've come to know most of them. We cook out down there, we know each other. So I enjoy the Marina life, but I don't know that, I mean, it looks like you guys are going to go from five dollars a foot to ten dollars a foot on me, which is doubling. You got about four people that that's really affecting like that. I understand an increase, but that just seemed a little severe, and I thought maybe it's an oversight. I understand looking at ledgers and going up, maybe it's a small amount, but there's, there's a few people that are carrying the bigger increase on that. You know, just speaking about the Marina, I don't know if this is something to talk about now, but, because I didn't read the agenda, don't have it, but I did watch the work session last week, and, you know, a lot of it's about fuel, fuel and amenities, and I want it to be better down there, I want things to do better, so I'm not, I'm not, you know, trying to do anything negative here. But I would say that the one looper we got down there, he would buy fuel there, he looks, he's not far from the fuel docks, they don't accept American Express. We rode over to Dog River, he filled, he bought a thousand dollars worth of fuel over there so he can get his points or whatever. That's just an idea that you guys might want to, to think about if you want to attract, you know, those kind of people. I bought fuel there, I bought a hundred gallons a week ago, I need to buy another hundred now. But, you know, I like the facilities, I like the atmosphere down there, I just, I feel like at the conditions things are right now, it's hard to justify going up double, and, you know, that's, you know, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot. Appreciate that. Lot of agenda items. Okay, seeing no one else, I will close public participation and move to council comments. Councilman Robbins.
Yes, sir, thank you. I got a couple of things I want to talk about tonight. You know, the first, it's been kind of weighing on me since our last couple of meetings, and over the last several weeks, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and they, you know, they all kind of say the same thing, and that is, you know, we're really saddened by the way some of these meetings have gone, especially, I think, you know, one of the ones we had recently. And I'm really speaking towards the public participation comment section. You know, I really enjoy hearing what the people of Fairhope have to say any time, but especially in these meetings. I think that's a very valuable portion of what we do in here, is to hear the feedback from the community and what's going on. But, you know, this last meeting in particular, we had, you know, threats and name-calling, and just general behavior that wouldn't be acceptable on a kindergarten playground, and it shouldn't be acceptable here either. I think we should hold ourselves to a higher standard than that, and that goes for the council and the mayor included, we're a part of that. And so I would encourage anybody that plans to speak tonight or a next meeting, you know, we welcome your criticism, we expect it, but there's a way to conduct yourself in a manner that doesn't embarrass yourself, the city, and so I just would ask you to take that into consideration. And again, I appreciate your feedback, but let's do a better job of representing our city. And then the next thing I want to talk about is, and this is kind of a, just kind of a warning, I guess, to our other councilmen, I've spoken to the mayor about it, and that's about this, discussing this new form, proposed form of government. You know, I've been asked a lot recently my thoughts on the matter, and my response had been, you know, that I didn't feel that it was appropriate to use my position as an elected official as a platform to push one side or the other. And, you know, it turns out there's law to back that up, and I wanted just to read something that our city attorney found for us, and it says, "Any person who attempts to use his or her official authority or position for the purpose of influencing the vote or political action of any person shall be guilty upon conviction of a Class C felony." And so if you ask me, Jay, what do you think about this new proposed form of government, I say, I'd rather not give an opinion on it. It's not because I don't like talking to you, it's because I'm careful. And I, and that's not to say that if somebody asks you for your opinion, you can't give it to them. I think there are restrictions on the ways in which you give that opinion. For example, I think speaking about it and giving opinion from your council seat would be at least construed as a violation of that rule. I think, you know, using city resources to disperse that information would be violative of that rule in some way, and I just would so ask you all to be conscious of that when, when deciding whether or not to, to take a position one way or the other. Obviously, there's no rule on giving your opinion, but I just, you know, I'd ask you to be careful and, and think about this rule before you do it. And, you know, finally, you know, I look at this as, you know, my job is, as a city councilman, is to be a voice of what the people want me to do on their behalf, not for me to tell them what they should be doing. And so I just, you know, again, if you, if anybody wants my opinion, I'll be happy to discuss with you any issue you'd like, but I just wanted to let everybody know, if you had not seen that information, to be careful in, in what you say and how you say it.
Councilman Con.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things to bring up. Obviously, it's no surprise or secret to anyone that we've had some, some mutual trust and communication issues with the mayor and the council, and regardless of which side of the fence you fall on, I think that we could all work a little, a little harder to make that an improvement. And what I would suggest, the first place to start, I attended the supervisor meeting, I think it was 8:30 a.m. on Fridays before the council meeting, so I was able to attend that, I guess it was this past Friday, or actually, it was the week before I went out of town, and very informative. I think we can attend that two people at a time, is that, so we could get on a schedule amongst the council, but, you know, just to spend the time, put the effort in to, to be there, I think it would improve the lines of communication, I think it would improve employee morale, seeing that we're engaged and we can do it in a, in a capacity that, that doesn't deteriorate into, into, you know, pointing fingers. I think that that's a good place to start. I attended the director's roundtable today for a little bit, that's at 3:30. It'd be nice to have a way to maybe bring more of that information into the council meeting. You know, we all have jobs, it's hard to, to block out six hours to meet on a Monday and just go all, all evening, but, but I do think, you know, little steps that we can all make towards improving that line of communication will go a long way, so. Citizens expect more, employees deserve more, you know, I think that there's enough blame to go around, and I'm just going to say that's going to be my step towards trying to improve what I can control. That's it.
Councilman Brown.
No call in.
Councilman Boone.
Well, actually, I had a comment, but unfortunately, my attorney told me I can't talk about it up here, so, if anybody would like to know my opinion on this, these subjects, just give me a call. That's it. That's it.
I have no comments tonight. Item five on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. This is an amendment, a proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number 1253. Request is on the property of the Teachers Retirement System of Alabama to Tourism Resort District concurrent with annexation to the City of Fairhope. Property is generally located on the west side of Battles Road, just south of Crane Place in Fairhope, Alabama. A portion of property ID number 72845, Camellia at the Colony. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance, please? Okay. Mr. Dyes.
Thank you, Council President. This is a conditional annexation for the Tourism Resort District. This has gone before the planning commission back in December. The applicant asked to hold this, they had an accompanying application for subdivision that was going through the extraterritorial jurisdiction process, and that's been worked out now, so they asked where to go forward. The property consists of 1.5 acres owned by the Retirement Systems of Alabama. The product that subdivision was seven lots, again, the TR District, 1.5 acres, the planning commission did recommend approval, staff concurs with that recommendation. The planning commission did add a couple, three conditions to that, and I'll read those if I could, please. The first one is the pending water and sewer issue, infrastructure issues shall be resolved between the applicant and the City of Fairhope Water and Sewer Department. Number two, all aspects of the colony at the Grand TR District shall remain as is unless otherwise specified in the subject application. And three, the property shall be low-rise residential zone, and that's all consistent with the zoning ordinance. I believe the first one has been resolved. That one was an issue that we had regarding the sewer, and was it low pressure or was it going to be gravity? And they have, they did go with the gravity system, from my understanding, but again, this is the first reading, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
It took me a little while to figure out where that was, that one and a half acres.
Yes, sir.
It looks like it's just to the left of number five of Azalea, if you're familiar with that golf course, does that sound familiar?
Yes, sir, I think that's true, yes, sir.
You know, I'm just going to make a general comment that RSA may not like, but at what point do they start eating away into the golf course, and, you know, because that's, that's an amenity, and what, how long do we let them take a piece of land, a little at a time? I know that there are other parcels of land that they're looking at, you know, developing, and so while I'm not saying for or against this, at some point in time, it seems that they're going to just be left with nothing but houses.
I think that's a very valid comment, Council President, that is a, you know, this is a piece of property that's undeveloped right now, but it is adjacent to the golf course, and it does add an amenity to that, so I can understand the position.
You know, and I, and I'm not trying to say that you don't have a right to, to make money, but at what cost to our community are we going to allow development? Just to continue, and just continue to eat up what some people view as what was not intended to be built on.
Wayne, what does the Tourism Resort District grant them permission to do?
It's a, it's 3.5 units per acre, it's just really more of a, what they're proposing to do is more of a residential district. I believe this was resulted from about 10 years ago, a new district that was created for this particular area. I think overall, I think the ordinance says they won't, they can't have more than 175 acres or so forth of this, and I think this does fit in with all that, but the Tourism Resort, if you read it, it's for tourist-related activities and amenities and things of that nature. It does, and when you, when you look deep into it, it does allow single-family homes, but the whole, the whole district was designed for its very name, for tourist-related activities.
And we're not allowed to ask them what they intend to do with it?
Well, but now, they've already, they've already had a, for whatever reason, they chose to get the subdivision first, and so they, because this is not annexed yet, this is, it's a conditional annexation, they had to go through the extraterritorial jurisdiction process, which means they had to go to the county and then to the city as well. That has been done, and that has already been, they are, do you have a subdivision that's already been done? So I believe we know that it's going to be a seven lot, it is a seven lot, single-family development contingent upon this rezoning application.
What other area is around that or is zoned a tourist resort?
I believe the majority of the area around it is zoned tourist resort.
Tourist colony?
I don't see a map, we should have brought a map in here, I don't see the map in here with that. That is a common district throughout there, especially on the RSA property, that's a common zoning district on that property.
So is the Camellia at the colony going to be seven residential lots, or is this additional one and a half acres?
This additional one and a half acres.
Is going to be seven lots?
Yes, sir.
Residential lots.
I, I, let me go back and check, I'm reading from the staff report, and I believe it was single-family lots, and the site plan is attached as well. If you read the, if you look at the last page in your packet, you'll see a, an application for the subdivision, Exhibit A, it shows seven lots.
Minimum lot size, 2,100 square feet.
That is the existing district, yes, sir.
Minimum lot size, 2,100 square feet.
But these, the, the proposed, the subdivision application does not, is not 2,100 square feet. If you look at the, the lot sizes on those, and I can't read those, they're, they're larger than 2,100 square, 2,100 square feet.
Council, any comments before we open the public hearing?
I guess the one question I have, it looks like when this was first put into place, I guess, the, and I'm looking at, I guess, the tourism district as a larger whole, it says 637 units would be the max. Do we know kind of where we are, just to have a ballpark on that?
I don't have that in front of me, I know we have a list, and I'd be glad to bring that at the, at the next meeting for the second reading, I'd be glad to bring that forward and, or send it to you ahead of time so we can see where we're at with that.
Ahead of time would be great.
All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing, and if the developers here would like to hear from them as well. If there's any wanting to speak to this, come to the podium.
I haven't seen them here, this one, the, HMR is the consulting engineers on this, I don't see them here tonight, so.
Okay, public hearing is open. Okay, seeing no one willing to speak at the public hearing, or wishing to speak at the public hearing, excuse me, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any more comments before we let this lay over to the next meeting?
Wayne, so when they come with their site plan, are they going to have to meet the subdivision regulations, or is that?
Now, they've already brought that, that, they've already had, they already have a subdivision approved for that property already, and they did meet the subdivision regulations. The one issue we had, which was one of the conditions in, in the rezoning application, was the, that the water and sewer issue be resolved, and that issue was about gravity versus pressure sewer on that particular application, but that has been resolved as, as a condition. But they have, they have already, they've already gone through that process with the subdivision.
What about the retention, you know, stormwater, how is that handled with the tourist resort?
I would need, at the next meeting, I'll bring the, the application for subdivision, and it'll be all in there, and so we can, we can discuss it then, I have it in front of me.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Dyes? Thank you. All right, we'll move to item six, which is a public hearing, an ordinance to approve an applicant from Catherine Reynolds for a franchise agreement, for a franchise agreement to operate aquatics instruction, which includes a lifeguard and swim instruction at the Fairhope Municipal City Pool at 803 North Grino Road.
Good evening, Council Mayor. First of all, for those of you that haven't met him, this is Noah Williams, he's manager at the swimming pool, and I wanted to bring him up and kind of speak to this this evening and introduce you all to him. He's been with us four years, but he doesn't get out and about much, so. Noah, I'll let you go ahead and speak to this.
So, Mike Rogers developed a Fairhope swim about four years ago, right before I got here, to provide a need that the city wasn't, didn't have filled at the time, just little swim lessons. He's done a great job these past four years, he's taught from all ages, from toddlers to adults. By this time, he's needing to step away so he can focus on some other goals of his life. He's gone through his own process to find somebody to replace and step in and take over the franchise agreement for him, and with this, the rec board has recommended the, the transfer of the franchise agreement.
It's actually a whole new franchise agreement, because she's, she's just kind of taken Michael's business.
Role, yeah.
Council, I would like to also add that I did ask city clerk about this last week, and that this was, that the gentleman that had the existing franchise agreement was all, was very diligent about reporting his income, because, you know, we have, we get a certain percentage of gross proceeds, and I believe that's what you told me, right, clerk?
That is correct.
That that was one that was very consistent about it, so, and it fills a need as well. Is that safe to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all have any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, y'all might want to sit on the front row in case we have some more questions. We'll open the public hearing, if anybody wants to speak.
Don't we need to introduce it?
Yeah, introduce it.
I'd like to introduce it.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this matter, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak at the public hearing, we will close the public hearing, and barring any further comments from the council, we will let this lay over to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you. Item number seven on tonight's agenda is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1412 and ordinance number 1315 of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, by revision of Section 2121 by the adoption of the following electric rates for all electric customers of the city. Somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
Sorry to do this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peterson, and I appreciate you, I'm trusting you got that email I sent you late, and, and as far as the electric rates go, I was able to, to use those bar charts to calculate some percentage increases, and it may not have been all-inclusive, but it was a rough idea, and if you just, let me have another few seconds here, Mr. Peterson. Council, just so you know, because I like to go back and compare, you know, proposed rates to the existing rates, and if you go back to the paperwork that Mr. Peterson had given us in the last work session, this was residential electric, and these are just some, these are some examples of what's been proposed. The residential 1,000 kilowatt-hours per month showed an increase, a proposed increase of 6.84 percent, is that drive with what you guessed?
Probably about right, yes, sir.
For the 2,500 kilowatt amps, is that kilo, that should be kilowatt-hour?
Kilowatt-hour.
Yeah, there's a, there's a type one there. 2,500 kilowatt-hours per month, the rate is 2.88 percent increase, and then when you get up to 5,000 kilowatt-hours per month, it's 1.46, so under one and a half percent.
Yeah, the higher-end users, when I, we tried to focus mostly on the base charge and a little bit on the upfront usage. I will say on the electric rate that we, that the first usage break is at 3,000, and we had intended to increase the, the higher rate only through the first 300, and I'm sorry I didn't get the communication back to Lisa, and, so it'd be a little less than what you're describing, but, you know, we're, we're changing the base rate by $3.53, so everybody will pay that every month.
And what is that base, what is that base rate?
The base rate will go from $9.22 to $12.75, and that's with no usage.
Yeah, and so, so council, that's one of those numbers, it, you know, when you look at that one on a percentage basis, it's a 25 percent, but that's one where it might be better to look at the dollar amount increase as well.
Yeah, if you're a low, if you're a low user, your percentage will go up a little bit because most of the rate increase is on the front end.
Right.
And if I look back at my power bill this winter, when it was close to $300, and the cap on this rate is about $7, you know, I'm looking at, what, three and a half percent, kind of what you described earlier. But, you know, I also talked about trying to work through a cost of service study, which the cost of service studies I'm familiar with that focus more on the, on the upfront charges, because you have expenses that you're going to have whether people use power or not, and in order to create a fair rate, you want to, you know, capture a lot of your fixed expenses in the front end, although there's an art to all of that, and you want to capture enough and be proactive enough in, in the step increases with the usage rate, so you capture some on the front end, but still have an opportunity to mitigate the rate increase on a personal level by reducing usage.
Council, what, I want to, I'm going to probably get pretty technical here, and Mr. Peterson, you might want to help me. We're going to have, I'm going to have Mr. Fred Clark, President of AMEA, which we're a member of Alabama Municipal Electric Authority, to come in and describe some things to us at some point in time, because the electric business, believe it or not, it's very complicated, and, and something that Mr. Peterson is saying is, you know, you have things like capacity costs, and you have distribution costs, and you have, it's a, it's a big complex formula in your cost of electricity, and just because you're not, your demand is not a particular number, let's say you have a particularly mild summer, well, you still have these capacity costs, because when you, it's like when you turn your lights on, you want the lights to come on, you, you, so you have to pay for these capacity costs that, they don't know that you're going to have days that are 85, they have to be able to provide electricity when it's, when it's 95 or 100 degrees in there, so you pay for this capacity, and also you have to pay for the ability to distribute that electricity. So, sometimes you have to, and I think that's what you're talking about, some, some of this stuff has to be built into the rates, because those are, those are firm fixed costs for us, and we have contracts with a lot of electric providers through AMEA, and they certainly do a great job of negotiating these prices, but I think when he's talking about these formulas, that's a little bit of what you're alluding to.
Yes, sir.
What our costs are.
Right.
We have those capacity costs and whatnot passed on to, to us, as a, we are a customer, a city's a customer with AM, through AMA... a city's a customer with AM, through AMA, and buying these large amounts of electricity through these providers.
Correct. And we have fixed maintenance costs on all of these facilities as well, you know, whether it be substation maintenance or tree trimming, for example. And people, you know, want more reliable service, and in order to provide that, you've got to continue that maintenance, whether they use any power or not. So you're going to need to try to recover that on the front end before you get into the usage. And then when you have larger usage customers, you know, they can't absorb the brunt of the entire added rate because of what it costs to maintain the system necessarily, because they're only one customer on the line. And that's where the whole cost of service study gives you an opportunity to look at how to spread those costs fairly among all the customers.
And how does that place our base rate if you go up to $12.70 something?
75 cents, right.
How does that stack up to our competitors? I didn't, I don't think I had that as a chart.
I think there's some that are targeted around $20, and I think there are others that are a little bit higher than that. But the higher they get with the base rate, the less the usage charge is. But everybody's going to pay upfront for what level of service that is built into that base rate charge.
Is that base rate the lowest around then? And what I'm saying is, you can't just look at that as one, so if you look at a 25 percent increase, that's just one part of the equation. Even, even if it's still the lowest around, it's not the full picture.
That's correct. And I would say, very likely, it is the lowest around. And this cost of study service may ask us to take a little bit off on the higher end users and their rate, and add a little bit more to the lower end users, in order to protect ourselves from any type of, you know, if we become dependent on a large user, and that large user goes out of business, then we're going to be having to try to catch up for what we've lost in revenue based on that usage. Versus, if everybody pays their fair share, then we won't be as susceptible to that type of failure from a large customer leaving.
And so, and counsel, thanks for bearing with me. I'm trying to explain a lot of this for the, for the public as well, is that if you see a 25 percent increase in the base rate, that doesn't mean that your utility bill is going up 25 percent. It may only be going up, you know, if you have a $100 bill, I don't know. You know, you'd have to look at the different usage points, break points, to determine how much it's really going to go up.
And some of those cost comparisons, I tried to offer some low end, medium range, and high range usages, so you can get a feel for how our rate compares to the, compare, you know, to our sister utilities.
Right. Can I, because this ordinance has been introduced tonight, and it's the first reading, and I don't know if you went back to your office and were able to put, I doubt you could put all that together in the short amount of time you have, but.
I did as much as I could.
I'd love to see, no, and I applaud you for that, I'd love to see a matrix that shows us, you know, that those graphs that we have, but if we had a matrix that showed us existing, and then what a new, and a new bill might look like, you know, maybe a dollars and then as a percentage basis.
We can do that.
Because I think that that base rate is going to get diluted quite a bit as your usage goes, goes up.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Does that make sense, counsel? Anybody else interested in that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. There, I've asked a lot of questions. Anything else on that you want to explain?
I will just say that, you know, the rate increase is to help service what would be a debt to the substation improvement plan we're working on, which provides additional reliability to every customer we have. And, you know, if we're going to provide that service to everybody, and, you know, try to maintain everything we've got today in terms of operation cost and expenses, and you know, it's only fair for everybody to participate in what it costs to pay that debt back. And, you know, it's not, I mean, I know, $7 a month may seem like a lot, but if you're looking at a $150 power bill or $200 power bill, you know, it becomes a matter of how much reliability you're willing to sacrifice in terms of deferring these expenses longer, which I'm not too excited about trying to do that. I mean, Sunday, I couldn't, as hot as it was, and taking the dogs for a walk around the block, I was thinking, man, I'm glad businesses are closing on Sunday, because I'd hate to think what the substations are doing right now. And today, we actually cranked up a couple of generators at some of our plants, just to, we're getting, you know, pretty close, and we've done some load projections that, you know, we need to be moving sooner, I think, than later.
Somebody would ask the question that if we're doing that to offset improvements, what happens when the improvements are paid for? Rates go down?
Now, the payback on these rates is scheduled for 25 years. So it is not anytime soon, or, somebody was talking about Tom Cool not being here 30 years from now, I don't think I'm going to be here 25 years from now either, but.
Yeah, but I don't think as government, we ought to say, that's not going to be our problem in 25 years either. We should be.
No, I agree.
And I think that this council, at least, would probably rather pay that off a lot sooner than 25 years.
Oh, absolutely.
Because there's going to be a lot come up in the next 25 years.
And, you know, we are conscious of the cost to operate the utilities, but costs continue to go up too. And, you know, we have a lot of dedicated folks that are trying to take care of the system, and, you know, at some point in time, we need to share some of that love with them too. I mean, we, you know, I think there's a balance in all of that, and we'd like to try to reach that, and this rate increase is an opportunity to see where we are when we get this project finished. And yeah, I'd be happy to lower the rates, absolutely. But, you know, I'd like to make sure that we have a, you know, vision going forward as to how we want to, you know, deal with the way we trim the lines, and the way we operate the equipment we have, and the way we service the customer. And maybe we charge a little bit more for the front end cost of what it costs to install services to offset some of that too. But those are things we can get to when we, you know, have a better idea of where this rate increase is putting us in terms of our annual expenses.
So did I even say you wanted to, you wanted to tweak some of those numbers that you've given us?
Yeah, I think, I think we're missing one bracket of usage. The first 300 is what I'd like to be able to raise, and I'll get with Lisa.
That would go below the first 3,000?
Yes, the first bracket would be zero to 300, and that rate would go up to the 11.73 cents. And then after 300, it would go back down to the 10.337 cents that it is now. And that's coming from the existing rate.
300 to 3,000?
Yes, from 301 to 3,000, we'd go back to what the base rate is now, or the usage rate is now.
Which is?
Which is 10.337 cents. And then over 3,000, it goes back up to 11.422 cents. You know, and that is a little bit of a conservation measure to try to encourage people to conserve. And it gets back to the demand too, and when you have those high usage spikes that everybody contributes to, the higher end users actually absorb more of that.
Okay. Any changes to the commercial and industrial?
Yeah, the commercial rate had an increase. The base charge on the commercial was 29.95 today. We're proposing to go up to $40. And then the first 1,000 usage would go up from 10.96 cents to 11.73 cents.
And then over, over 1,000, or 1,000?
Over 1,000 would go back to 10.96 cents.
Counsel, I hope you're making notes of this.
But I'll provide the chart for the commercial rate as well.
I would ask that you do that, and then on for every, it's a lot of work, but for every single one of those categories.
Right. And those are the only two rate schedules that we changed. The municipal and the industrial rate are relatively small in terms of numbers. And changing those a proportionate share, like we're doing the residential and commercial, really would produce a whole lot of extra revenue. And the truth of the matter is, the schools would be paying, you know, out of their tax funds anyway, and so would the municipalities.
No change to that school.
So you'd have to make up for that somewhere else.
At schools, no change?
The schools do not change.
City use doesn't change, right? That's just more, that's just a bookkeeping measure anyway, isn't it, kind of?
Sure.
The, the city use, I guess that's more of a paper transaction for the city use, the charges, there's a city use in there.
I'm hoping that the city pays us for the electric, I don't know.
So they tran, you transfer money between the different departments?
I'm sure we do.
To the electric, okay. Any questions?
Got a few comments, I guess, just on, I'm looking at all four of these.
Yes, sir.
Proposed increases as a whole. So, understand, obviously, sometimes we've got to raise rates in order to keep providing quality service. I just want to make sure we're maintaining, I guess, our status kind of at the bottom end of that rate spectrum. I think that that's one of the benefits of owning your own utility system, is that we can hopefully deliver that quality at a lower cost than our, you know, than other utility companies around the area, but also.
Right, and that would be my goal.
I also want to, I know we need to, we need to pay for some infrastructure that's due for upgrades, but, but some of that should have been set aside over the years of money. And I know that you weren't here, and it may not be done, but I don't want to see us raise rates just to cover the expense of things that should have been paid for all the way, you know, the whole way along. And I feel like we've got other sources we could tap into some money, so.
Yeah, and I think there is some reserve funds.
Okay.
That are dedicated to the electric. I think Councilman Burrell has spoken of that before.
And I missed the work session, I missed last week, so if y'all already discussed this, I apologize.
You're fine, we'll go a long way towards offset.
And, you know, and the only thing about reserves would be that, you know, and I don't know what hurricane season brings each year in terms of damage, but if we had a catastrophic Hurricane Ivan, for example, we would be putting a lot of money out to recover. Granted, we may recover some of that with FEMA, but to keep a reserve available, I think is important too. And I think, you know, from the council perspective, deciding what that reserve fund should look like, and what value it should have in terms of restoration efforts, from whether it be a natural disaster or any other type of, you know, event that would cause every customer to be out of service, for example, and then we'd lose the revenue too. And then we'd be putting a lot of money into the system trying to get it back, so. That's a judgment call. I think there's some benchmarks that you can look at from other utilities and how they look at reserve funds, but I think it's important to have some in your back pocket when you need it. And how much that is, you know, I'm not here to necessarily tell you what I think, but I will tell you, I think it needs to be in the, you know, two months' worth of revenue at a minimum, and maybe three months if you want to feel comfortable with it. And I think that's kind of what you would find in the industry, if you looked out to what people would want to have in a reserve fund capability, especially in a storm area.
Any other questions on this in particular, on electric, right now? Okay. If I don't hear any more questions, we'll move on to item eight, and let this lay over to the next meeting, in the understanding we're going to get a little more, a little more information, or actually just presented to us in a different format as well. Item eight is an ordinance amending ordinance number 700, ordinance number 1121, and ordinance number 1466, an ordinance to amend and add to chapter 21, article 5, the gas, section 2161 Fairhope Court of Ordinances. Would someone like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Peterson, I'm missing this, I didn't have the bar charts to go through and calculate.
Now, and gas is a little more difficult, because other utilities post their rates, but they have the purchased gas adjustment price, you know, that goes with that. So it's hard to tell where they are unless you call them, and we didn't do that, but we can find more out about that. And the gas, we didn't do. The difference with electric, you know, we've got 6,500 some customers, maybe 67, 6,800 customers. Gas, we've got about 11,000, so. In the gas, we're looking at a $1.50 increase in the base charge, which would increase it from the current $8.96 to the $10.46 base charge. And then we were looking at the, and I think, here again, I think the first 40 CCF, which is a low usage, would be the 4 cent increase, and then, once you get over 40, it would go back to the original rate of $1.43. And that, here again, is a similar, you know, philosophy, in that, you know, you've got users that require the same type of leak survey, they require the same type of corrosion, atmospheric corrosion inspection, they require all of the issues to read the meter and send the bill, whether they use any or not. And so when you start looking at this cost of service information, you realize that, you know, sometimes the base charge is the one item that you can recover expenses from without any usage. Although gas is, you know, it's not a, it's a commodity that everybody doesn't have to have either, so you've got to be conscious that, you know, you want to provide a good value and a good service. And so I think we want to try to do that, and that's why you won't see that gas base charge quite as much. But with the number of customers we have, and with the amount of exposure we have in terms of some cast iron gas main and some other gas mains that we need to address in terms of exposure, you know, I think, I think this, this here again, would recover the same level of debt in the same 25-year period with this rate increase.
So could you, on this gas as well, I mean, this is a, this is a, there's a lot of really useful information, but it's hard to sometimes compare it to something else. So could you get, give us proposed numbers for every category, proposed, existing, percent change, and then, rather than list all of our nearby competitors, maybe it's easier just make an average of our, I mean, there's not as many gas.
Right.
Providers as there are, you know, electric providers, but, you know, you could probably come up with maybe three competitors.
We can do that.
And just show in the region what their average price is. That way, we know how we compare to average, and we know how we compare to what the existing is, the proposed to the existing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would that be helpful, counsel?
Yep.
Do we want to move on to water rates now? Or does anybody have any more questions about the gas? If not, I'm going to let that lay over to the next meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is an ordinance to establish water rates and capacity asset fees and installation fees for all customers of the City of Fairhope Water System. This ordinance amends number, ordinance number 953, and repeals ordinance number 1122 and ordinance number 1383. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Yeah, you can go over the highlights of that if you would.
The water and the sewer both have an additional component in the rate increases that I'm proposing tonight. Both of them, however, look at the base charge, which in water, for example, on inside the city is $10.63, and it includes 2,000 gallons of usage. So if you use 2,000 gallons, you're going to pay $10.63. So I'm proposing that we drop the 2,000 usage to 1,000 usage, and not really do anything but change that aspect of the rate. And so, you know, here again, it's a, it's a front end, it's front end loaded, where everybody may pay a little bit more. may pay a little bit more, assuming that they don't conserve the 1,000 gallons on the back end, in terms of, you know, being more conscious of water usage.
You're leaving the base rate the same?
Yes, everything stays the same, except for that base rate...
The 2,000 gets broken to 1,000?
For that base rate, you only get 1,000 gallons covered in that base rate.
And your additional 1,000 gallons is the same as it is now?
And then the second 1,000 gallons is charged at $3.05, which is the rate.
Yeah. So whatever you use, if you use 5,000 or 10,000, you're only being charged that additional
$3.05. $3.05, right. That's correct.
If you use 40,000, you're still only $3.05 more.
$3.05, that's correct.
Okay. And then so on for the other categories of the outside, the W-2, 3, and 4?
Yes, for all the rates, yes, sir.
Would be 425, would be, all you pay additional?
That's correct.
No matter your water usage?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, but where we are looking to change it a little bit is, right now, and I'm not sure about the bigger meter use, capacity charges, but we're adding an asset fee, which is to pay for the capital improvements for wells, tanks, and treatment plants. And what you, what I've tried to do is look at how much it costs for a residential customer, which averages about 250 gallons a day, how much of a well, how much of a tank, how much of a plant, in terms of dollars, does it cost to provide that service? And that's the asset fee that we're trying to recover when somebody comes in to get a connection fee for a water service. And then I want to add how much it costs to install it. Now, if they build in a new subdivision where that water service is already installed, there is no installation fee, but...
And that's a completely new fee?
And then as you look through the meter sizes, you look at how many equivalent residential connections can be installed on a 2-inch meter, for instance, and we're looking at seven and a half or 28 multifamily units. And so you look at the multiplier of that 1,500 for one residential unit, times the seven and a half that you can put on a 2-inch meter on a commercial service, and a commercial service with a 2-inch meter would be $11,250. And then the installation cost is what we've estimated it costs to provide the service for that 2-inch.
Mr. Peterson, I want to read this right, so there is, there is not that fee for a single-family resident?
No, sir.
It only applies to commercial, multifamily?
Well, no, everything is based on an equivalent residential unit, and we're making the assumption that an equivalent residential unit is a 3/4-inch meter.
But if somebody's just building a home, they don't have this fee, I see commercial or multifamily. But then there's a multifamily, there's one under there.
Well, one, well, yeah, on a 3/4-inch meter, you get one fam, it's not multifamily at that point, it's a single family.
Okay.
But that is, that is the service cost for that. And then you get to a 1-inch meter, you know, up to four units, we can put on a 1-inch meter, but, you know, and on multifamily, just to let you, for hotels, we assume half of what an equivalent residential customer would consume in a month, and for apartments, we assume 2/3, I think that's, there's a definition of that in here.
Is that money going to an account, a special account, to be used towards capacity?
Well, and that's a question that I spoke briefly with Lisa and Lynn about, you know, whether there's a reserve fund set up for capital improvements and how that should be diverted into that.
Yeah, how can we do that? When the accounting's money in, money out, how do we?
And I don't know, I think there are reserve funds set up for different types of connections, and I'm, I apologize, I haven't gotten too deep into the, to the books of how, I mean, I don't know how many accounts there are, but there's quite a few, I haven't read through all of them. But I think it's important that we bank that money for capital improvements. And this, you know, when you start looking at the wellfields we're trying to develop now out on 33, and the transmission capabilities that we'll need to have for that, you know, those, we can spend some money in that, you know, pretty quickly if we have to upgrade a water plant and add a well, you know, within the next couple of years. And that's probably what we're looking at doing, so, I mean, I think it's a more than fair rate now. The other side of this thing is on the, there's an outside-the-city Fairhope multiplier, and if you happen to be outside the city, we threw in a number of two, so if you're a single-family resident outside the city, you'll pay $3,000 instead of 1,500. And that deals with the transmission lines that we're looking to feed out away from the central part of the city. I think, you know, those costs are variable at this point, until we start modeling the system and knowing where we're going to be able to have our resources available to feed those areas, we, you know, don't know exactly. I could accept one and a half as a short-term, you know, see how this works and look at coming back to it later. But I like two as well, I mean...
Okay.
But that's the other part of the increase with rates, is to deal with the capacity asset and the connection fee for that.
Questions for Mr. Peterson with regards to water? Any questions about these capacity asset fees, the multiplier? That's on page two. Okay. We'll let that lay over, we'll move to item 10. Item 10 is an ordinance to establish wastewater or sewer rates and capacity asset fees and installation fees for all customers of the City of Fairhope wastewater system. This ordinance amends ordinance number 953 and repeals ordinance number 1122 and ordinance number 1383. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
And sewer is mere image with water. I did look at the debt service we have currently, at the existing wastewater plant and the upgrade for that, as well as what we know are going to be future transmission upgrades that we're talking about, and what that capacity makes available to us. And so the sewer asset fee would be $2,000 per residential customer, and then it would go proportionately similar to the water based on the size meter and the equivalent residential connections you could hook to that. The multiplier again is two, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't go back to 1.5 on that as well. Right now, the out-of-town customer pays $2,800, and the in-town customer pays $600. But I think it's fair, and I think it helps offset rate increases down the road when we're able to bank that money for capital improvements, because I think that's where the bulk of our money will be going. The rate increases should be part of the rehabilitation work we do on the existing
Questions, counsel? So basically, when you said it mirrored it, you just broke the 2,000, and the sewer was the first 2,000 included, and you broke it into 1,000, only the first 1,000 gallons of sewage?
Yes, that's correct.
And then you pay per thousand?
Mere image to the water, right, yes, sir.
Okay. Rate stayed the same?
Right.
Okay. All right, we'll let this lay over to the next meeting, and I appreciate all the information and all the time you spent.
I'll get the charts available to you, hopefully before the end of the week.
Okay.
And we'll be able to look at them before the next council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, I know that's a lot of work, thank you. Okay. Item 11 on tonight's agenda is a resolution that City Council of City of Fairhope approves and authorizes the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the benefit of Fairhope Airport Authority and the H.L. Sunny Callahan Airport, the maximum grant of $3,617,020 for phase four, under the project number listed herein. Mr. McEnroni, I did my best to brief the council in the work session, if you want to just give a very quick summary of what this money would be used for, I told them that we had a 5% match from the Airport Authority, which we do have, the state of Alabama will match 5%, and the FAA will provide 90% of the funding.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell. Yeah, this is the phase four of our eastside construction project. We've been working on this for five years. The total project cost will be about $8.4 million, and we will put about $450,000 of Airport Authority money in it. This phase will give us seven inches more of additional asphalt on the 17 acres that we have out there now, all the utilities, water, sewer, electric, and gas, and fence all around 32. So this is discretionary money by the FAA, but we've, we feel pretty comfortable that we'll, we have a really good shot this year finishing it up, and allow us to build that general aviation terminal we've been thinking about for years and years.
I told them that this was, this was to finish everything off, to make it ready to be occupied.
Be ready to build hangars and general aviation terminals, and teangers, and new MROs, and whatever we need.
Would you explain what a general aviation terminal is, so people don't email us and tell us that 737s are going to start?
It's a, you know, in a community airport, which ours is, it's about a 4,000-square-foot building, where pilots can have a lounge, they'll have some meeting facilities for briefings, they'll have a general area for, where passengers can come in and use the bathroom, maybe have a galley where you can have, serve lunch for, for business customers that fly in, and basically just spend, you know, have a business meeting in the airport and leave. And then we have the, the FBO office will be there, you know, pretty small building, about 4,500 square feet, about the size of a small house.
Right. Questions for Mr. McEnroni? Okay. Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve and authorize the city to enter into the grant agreement. So moved.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passed, just thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution that City Council finds that improved water distribution systems in and around the City of Fairhope serve a valuable public purpose, and the City Council desires to contract with a licensed plumber for the installation of the required relocation items based on a low-bid slash quote process on the customer side of the meter on our relocated water main. The relocated water is to abandon the existing 2-inch main that was installed years ago in an alley that is now impassable due to trees that have grown in size over the years and fences that have been installed. I told you it'd probably take me longer to read that than to entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second, and Jay, in the work session, gave us a thorough overview of this. Does anybody else have any questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution that City Council hereby amends the rules and regulations for the Fairhope docks, revises the slip rates at the Fairhope docks effective July 1, 2018, and upon the expiration and renewal of existing slip leases and repeals resolution number 2390-15 and any other resolution in conflict with the provisions of this resolution. I will entertain a motion. Pass this resolution.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion. I want to start by saying that Barefoot that came up in the council comments, I'm sorry, in the public participation segment, that stated that the slip rates are going up to, from $5 to $10, is, in my opinion, probably correct. We don't, the slips just haven't been improved to the point where I think we can command that price. Now, we could say, well, we're going to take that money and make those improvements, but at the same time, they're not, and $10, let me say also, counsel, is not a very high price, but most marinas that charge that are, the slips are in much better shape. I had a couple of other, I was okay, I was okay with the other charges that were proposed. I thought that they were fair prices, but the, for the open slips, I mean, basically for a liveaboard, you just another 10 bucks a month, and you can live there. But for the open slips being $10 a foot per month, I thought the gentleman made a very good point, and I would, I would like to reconsider that cost point. And I'm open for suggestions, or I'll, we have a motion in a second. It's up to the council's pleasure as to what you do, but I would, I would plead to lower that price.
I agree. That's why it's good to see the comparison of what we are today versus what we're proposing on any rate.
And, you know, if you, if you have a 20-foot boat, or a 25-foot boat, and you go up $5, you've gone up 125 a month. If you have a 25-foot boat and you go up $2, I say to 7, it's 50 bucks, which maybe even for what you're paying for, 7 is on the very lowest end you'll find anywhere, so we could say that we are probably the cheapest, and the slips are probably not in the best of shape, but at least we could look somebody in the eye and say that, you know, it's, you know, it's, we're trying to improve it and raise the rates when we make those improvements.
Can we, can we change the rates at this meeting, or does it need to be advertised?
I believe that we can, this is a resolution. We can amend, we can amend those fees, and somebody could, we could vote this down, you could amend the motion, making amendment to that, there's several ways we can do that. But I want counsel to be comfortable with this before, before you vote on it, so I don't want to be the only one speaking to this, and myself and Councilman Brown, but it just doesn't seem, and I do applaud the efforts of Lynn and Drew, but what they're trying to do is make this better, and we're putting a lot of money into this, and we're hiring people, and we're trying to make it better, but I just don't think we're to the point of charging that much yet, not for those slips. And there's only a few people, we're talking such an insignificant amount of money to the, to the, to the city that it's not worth it to upset people so much to make that change that it only impacts a few, a few people.
I guess my question would be, how long are we, how long are these leases? Are they year-by-year, month-to-month?
These are, they're yearly leases, right?
Generally speaking, they're, they're long-term. Only the liveabords and the shrimpers are at a, an annual lease, but for the most part, like, we have one that's there six months and then gone for six months, so we have combinations.
Six months, but it's not a long-term, no more than, nobody signs more than a year lease for that slip.
No, no.
And we could change that at any time, and, you know, if we were to make improvements, I think that's the time to...
And I think that, and that's, that's the reason behind my question, because if we, we as the city spend a bunch of money to improve these slips to where they could command that kind of money, I would expect us to go out and try to get that kind of money.
We would be reviewing every year.
If we're investing capital, capital to, to make those improvements.
And if I could go on and give you a little more history, just a few short years ago, it was, I think, about $640 a year for these slips, and we went to, for pleasure boats, $5 per foot per month. So we went from $640 per year to, if you have a 20-foot boat, $100 a month, effectively doubling that price that they were paying. So they, they just had a 100% increase recently, and the premise was, because we're trying to make these improvements, and we are, but to go up another 100% with nothing to offer them...
Except the future.
Except the future, right, but it's not like we're not suggesting making an increase again, I mean, I would say $7 is, that's a 40% increase.
Are you talking the open slips?
I'm only talking open slips.
Open slips, okay.
That's the only number.
Just write that down.
And in the grand scheme of things, that affects so few people, it hardly makes a dent in our marina income.
Can I take your attention to the new category we have as commercial boats? Do you want to do the same there? I would recommend it.
It was proposed to be $7.50.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with making it equal, seven.
Okay.
I mean, I want feedback from the council, you know, no sense in complicating it.
Right.
$0.50 a month for two boats is going to be $40 a year, man.
Exactly.
Kevin Boone can make that up.
Well, actually, in listening to the discussions, I happened to write down $7 on my sheet here prior to you saying it, so I don't mind amending my motion to accept this proposal, with the exception of the $10 per month and rate it to 750 per month, the same as the commercials.
Seven or 750?
I was gonna make it the same as the commercials and make it, like you say.
We're gonna make them both $7.50?
Yeah. Make it a little simpler.
You know, I will just interject. You know, the city is at a very different time in its life where rates haven't been increased. We just sat and listened to utilities rates, which I don't think have been increased in close to 20 years, but that doesn't make a difference to the citizen. You know, they're hearing rate increases, and if it's a difference of 50 cents in a slip, I would go with a lower rate, just because it sounds better, frankly, to the payee. It doesn't make that much difference.
The $7?
The $7 versus $7.50.
I'd swallow that down.
It isn't gonna make that much of a difference.
Actually, I'm just trying to be agreeable here.
I know you are.
I'll be $7, there's no problem. I can amend it to $7. It's not a problem.
The 45 and the 60-foot slips, I mean, are they, of the quality to command that kind of?
They are covered slips.
But are they deep enough that they can command that kind of?
Yes, they are.
Counselman Boone, why don't, to make it simple, why don't you withdraw your motion? Will you withdraw your first motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, you want to entertain another motion?
I certainly do. I need to say that over again?
You want to propose that the open slips and the commercial boats be at a rate of $7 per foot per month?
Yes.
And all other rates as proposed remain the same?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
That's what I thought. Okay, do we have a second?
Being the agreeable councilman that I am.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, now, discussion on that?
I do want to point out to all of you that these rates include the electricity, the water, trash, bathroom, showers, laundry, and, for those who are there, complimentary pumpout, because we're trying to encourage the use of the pumpout, which is up and running. So, that's not just a slip rate. That includes the services that we have to offer at the moment.
By the way, at that marina in Gunnersville, again, I did notice that their pumpouts were complimentary for slip renters.
Oh, good, good, okay.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, when the city took over the marina, the city already had the additional side, which was the east side of Fly Creek, correct?
Yes, city side.
Well, the east side of the marina, which is the west side of Fly Creek there.
Yes, so that's what we're talking about right now for that price increase. It's going from $5 to $10. Now, on the other side of the marina, which is the south and the west side, we're at, for sailboats, you're at $8 a foot annually, and for power boats, you're at $8.75.
No change there?
But we combined them.
So, but we're, what we were doing is we're combining, so we're basically dropping, dropping there.
Oh, I did not know that.
So.
I didn't know that that only applied to the Fly Creek portion of the marina.
Yeah.
So you would be dropping the current rates for those people?
Yes.
Oof, I'm glad you clarified that.
Thank you, because I didn't realize that.
I was assuming that these are only applied to those slips that are in disrepair on the Fly Creek portion.
No, this is, this is, in the beginning, when the gentleman stood up, this is, they were locked in for the yearly, for before the city took over, and that was for $5 a foot, but there's only, I do believe, four or five people that are set at that price.
I would still recommend we change it to the $7 for the Fly Creek portion and let those other rates remain the same.
Okay.
If they're not, because they are in better shape. They have better finger peers, and it's just better all over there, and they don't have the, as much of an issue of getting in and out of their slips. I mean, but those on Fly Creek are really, I mean, come on, they're not in good shape.
No. Yet.
All right, anybody have a, does anybody, do you agree, does everybody agree with me on that, on the $8.75 should remain the same?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
For the open slips and the commercial fishing boats, that would only pertain to the slips along Fly Creek. The, I don't know how we would say that.
Well, basically, what we're trying to do is.
It's on the east side of the yard there.
Correct. We're basically just trying to incorporate the whole marina together.
Right.
And pricing, so when their leases do come due.
So you are proposing to increase those where the sailboats are at from $8.75 to $10 per foot?
Yeah.
Wow. What do you think, counsel? We're gonna go 40% on the others, and then would we go to 10 from $8.75 to 10 on the sailboat slips? The so-called south, let's just call it the south part of the marina, because everything was on that south end.
But in, I mean, in fairness to everybody else, keeping it at $7 for that Fly Creek side, until we actually, you're able to get in there and do the improvements in our phases and then readjust the prices.
No, I'm thinking 7 for there, but I mean, either keep the others at $8.75 where they are presently, or maybe you do consider increasing that to $10.
Or can you go ahead and pass an increase and just have, you know, the caveat that the folks whose slips have not been upgraded maintain at the current rate of $5 a foot until the slip is upgraded? Can we do that?
How fast are you gonna help us get them upgraded?
Yeah, I think the $7 is a really, really low rate still. I mean, even, you know, we're looking, I mean, there are people in parts of Alabama, the coast, paying close to $16, and if you go over to the naval base in Pensacola, which will give you a government rate, it's $8.50, you know, and that's, I think that's about the cheapest you'll find. So, $7 is still below the lowest that I'm aware of, anywhere around the whole, you know, anywhere near here.
Not to.
For anything other than pulling up on a sandbar.
Not to complicate what appears to be an already overly complicated issue.
Yeah, we were trying to make it simple.
You know, in what you just described, Jimmy, is there any argument for what could be considered an upgraded slip? So if somebody, if it's proposed, as Jimmy said, and, you know, anybody whose slip has not been upgraded stays at their current rate, everybody else goes to $10, is there an argument that anybody could make, well, wait a second, mine hasn't been upgraded to what I consider an upgrade, so therefore I shouldn't have to pay an increased fee? I think that.
I think it muddies the waters.
I think it, I mean, if the purpose of this is to simplify the issue, I think we have long past simplified in this discussion.
I agree with that.
Um.
Well, you can make it very simple by saying the open slips on the east side of the marina would be $7 per foot per month, and then the open slips on the south side are, either you leave it at $8.75 or you make it to proposed 10.
Yeah, I mean, Drew, you're gonna be the guy that's interpreting this and enforcing it, and so I guess the question is to you, is that, is how Jack just described it, is that?
Well, I look at it as, you know, if I was a boater, you know, in there as well, you know, if the prices went up from $5 to $10 and there's no, the amenities haven't changed on that side, you know, but you gotta, you gotta look at it as a, I mean, not, there's, like I said, there's only four or five people that are paying $5 a foot right now. Everybody else is, you have either the current commercial fishermen, they're with you at a locked-in rate, and then you also have, there's only two commercial boats, which is Seaport right now.
About a year and a half.
Then eventually, we'll have Leah coming in there.
What would you like to see done with the sailboat slips? The open slips on the south side? Anything other than the east portion of the marina? Do you, you know, they're currently paying $8.75. What, how do you, you feel like the $10 is fair?
For a sailboat, it's $8 a foot, and then for power boats, it's $8.75, and then, of course, we don't have the liveaboard rate anymore.
For that portion of the marina, what do you think the price should be? It was proposed to be 10 here.
I'd say split the difference, you know? I mean, the condition that the docks and stuff are in, you know, I mean, you're asking a lot, but then again, you are given, you've got water, electric, your shower, your laundry, and stuff like that, so.
I make a motion that we.
We have a motion in a second on the table right now.
Do we remember what that is? It's been so long ago.
It was $7. It was $7.
For everybody.
$7 for commercial and open slips, which, as proposed, would have included the entire marina, and so it would have been lowering it. So, he asked Kevin, I can ask Kevin to withdraw his motion, and we can listen to yours. Why don't you tell us what you're proposing?
My motion would.
Wait a minute, hang on a minute. Let me withdraw this motion, then you just trot right on after with yours.
I make a motion to approve with the condition of the existing four or five, whatever it is, unimproved slips remain at their current rate, or remain at a rate of, increase to a rate of $7, and all other remaining slips that fit that criteria stay at their current rate of $8.75 or whatever it is.
The only fallacy with that is that you're saying four or five, that's only four or five occupied slips. There's 25 slips on that side that potentially.
Yeah, but if somebody comes in on that side, you know, it's, I basically categorize it's just the whole marina, you know? I'm not segregating, doing any segregation on there, so, where you have an $8.75 section and you got a $5.
I think we should segregate it. I think that side's worse.
My motion would be grandfathering in the people that are already there, but anybody that comes to that marina is paying full freight at this point.
At what price?
At the $8.75, whatever everybody else is already paying.
Okay, so then you're not increasing anything?
You're not increasing those.
You're not going from $8.75 to 10. You got, how many slips are there, 45 slips?
On that side, now, there's roughly around 25.
25 slips.
Yes, but there's not, you only have about maybe 18 occupied that are usable.
All right, go ahead, Jay, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't have anything else.
Well.
Jay, you rescind yours, and I'll try?
Yeah, give me a shot, I think I can do this.
Yeah, I take that motion back.
I'd make a motion that we approve this as presented with the caveat that the individuals in the unimproved lot, or unimproved slips get to maintain at $5 a slip, and that's what you said, four or five. Anyone new coming in, I think you can even charge them the $10.
Who determines the unimproved? The slip holder or the city?
Drew?
And you go out there and put a few boards up, and then they're gonna say it's improved.
It's approved.
Drew wouldn't do that.
No, improved is completely redoing.
Right.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Discussion? I'm sorry, I don't like that. I don't know, that's, I don't think it's that hard to say, make it as proposed, except for those portions on the, over there on the east side, and make it $7 a foot, which was what we all thought we were doing anyway. It's just two rates, because that's the part of the marina that's in real disrepair. The other part's not nearly as bad.
Well, yeah, it actually is.
And it would be going from $8.75 to 10, the other people would be going from 5 to 7.
I have a problem raising one and not raising the other.
Yeah, I have a problem raising one and not the other, and I also think that that is very subjective when you talk about what's improved and what's not improved. That really worries me. Anyway, that's my discussion. Anybody else?
I truly feel that we do need to go up on the rates on all of, across the board.
Well, if you go the open slips on the south side to 10, from $8.75, $8.75 to 10, and you take the commercial boats on Fly Creek from 5 to 7.50, you've gone up on all of them, and I think proportionately.
What if we make a motion to increase everybody's rate by $2?
Gee.
Then you go $8.75 to $10.75. All right, we have a motion on, we have a motion in a second. I'm gonna call a question on that. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
What was the vote?
Nay.
That was an aye.
Was that a aye?
Yeah.
Three to two.
Three to two?
Right.
Passed? Okay.
Okay, now, can I ask you what you just passed?
We're gonna run into problems with an improvement. Jimmy?
Okay, yes, I think what we just passed in was the, we passed the rates as presented by Drew, with the exception that the four or five that are in the unimproved slips currently would get to maintain at $5 a foot.
So anybody that's currently at $5 a foot is staying at $5 a foot?
Correct.
Okay, now, if somebody comes into that slip next to somebody paying that, what are they gonna pay?
They pay 10 bucks. They pay 10 bucks.
They know what they're getting into at that point. They know that it's a work in progress.
So what about, what about the, the, the commercial guys at Seaport? They're, I think they're, what are they, $6.50?
What you presented.
What was presented was $7.50 in the, in the, in the resolution.
And that's $7.50.
Okay. And the shrimpers?
Everything else, everything was.
Then I'll say the same, that's okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Crystal clear.
The hardest thing we've debated all year. Four motions.
Four motions.
I felt, I didn't get to make the motion. All right, moving on. Item 14 is a resolution that City Council approves a selection of eco-solutions for professional engineering services to prepare and submit permit applications and necessary documents for dredging slips and the marina at Fairhope docks. Hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule. entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
So moved.
Say it.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 15 is a resolution that the governing body of City of Fairhope hereby rescinds bid number 018-18 for driver's license reader program for the IT department due to no bids received and authorizes the city to solicit for informal bids in accordance with the Attorney General opinion from 1969. entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute amendment number one to the contract for professional engineering services for RFQ number PS009-18 for A.D.M.C&amp;D landfill permit 2018 with Hutchinson, Moore &amp; Roush, at a cost of the amendment not to exceed $3,600, which increases the total value of this project to $6,075 and to transfer budget of $6,075 from landfill maintenance expense account to professional service expense account. Mr. Johnson briefed us on this in the work session, so I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of fall flowers for the Public Works Department, total cost being $9,448.51, and to transfer a budget of $9,449 from the street maintenance and landscaping expense account to flowers expense account. Anybody like Mr. Johnson to speak to this?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the cost and transfer the budget. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution to award the bid for overhead doors, six of these, to the fire stations, bid number 023-18 to Bailey Door Incorporated with a total bid proposal of
So moved.
So moved.
Comes in at budget. A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 19 is a resolution to award the bid for crust aggregate, recycled concrete aggregate, and riprap for the Public Works Department to Martin Marietta, with a total bid proposal of $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
Comes in at budget.
Yeah, it's, it's just how much we budget to purchase, I believe, counsel, is just, we buy up to $50,000 worth of those materials, so. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 20 is a resolution. At the City of Fairhope, vote to procure a Freightliner M2 truck for the Water Department. This equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through Sourcewell's bid process. The cost is $93,920. I will tell you-
$4,000.
$4,000 under.
I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase an MALA geoscience ground penetrating radar for the Water Department to be used by all utilities from power till utility products as a sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama 1975. The cost will be $12,850, and this is also a budgeted item. Entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Say it.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 22 is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to renew the lease for a five-year term pursuant to the municipal lease agreement between the City of Fairhope and Michael Francis for the use of the premises solely and exclusively for an access to other city property which uses normally incident, which, which normally, which uses normally incident thereto, and for the maintenance of a bulkhead and the placement of cables to support a bulkhead on the same terms and conditions set forth in the lease agreement.
This one is simple. We have a lease, the first period has, comes to an end August 1st. We have three five-year extensions at $1,000 a year in this lease. What it allows us to do, we're leasing a piece of property from Mr. Francis. It gives us a turnaround on the Fly Creek end of the, of the marina. Without it, there are about 10 slips that we, cars could not get to, nor would we be able to work the bulkheads or do any maintenance of that sort down there.
Those the $5 slips or the $7 slips? Okay, anybody have any questions for Lynn?
Those are the $5 slips, I can tell you that.
They are definitely the $5 slips.
And they have the new bulkhead.
Well, those are being improved right now. So, they may be the $10 ones. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the, mayor authorizes renewal of this lease.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item 23 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Noel Broughton for NOBODA LLC, doing business as LWCC, located at 14 North Church Street, Fairhope, Alabama. And I ask, is there any reason to deny this application?
No, sir, please, sir.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve this restaurant liquor license application?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 24, I have a slight change. I have the corrected version. Item 24 should say, "application for a beer/wine on/off-premise license." I think it said restaurant liquor license correctly. It should say beer/wine on/off-premise license, if you want to make a note of that, by Richard Mark Foster for Section Street Pizza LLC, doing business as Section Street Pizza, located at 108 North Section Street, Building A, Suite 5, Fairhope, Alabama. Do you know of any reason, John, that we should deny this application?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the application, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, application is approved. Item 25 is a request from Mary Reiser, the executive director of the Fairhope Film Festival, requesting permission to use the Welcome Center on Section Street as their box office from Wednesday, November 7, 2018, through Sunday, November 11, 2018, with the stated box office hours, use of the city public area near the Fairhope clock, adjacent to the flower bed, and near the northeast corner of Fairhope Avenue and Section, signage, and additional publicity and city notifications from October 26, 2018, through November 11, 2018, requesting a minimum of six pole banners to be hung 14 days prior to and during the festival. And I just want to ask this, staff, because you were instrumental, do you have any input on that?
No, I just talked with Mary too, and we're off that.
We're okay? Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the request, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, request is granted. Item 26 is a request from Mark Pelucci, treasurer and firefighter for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department, requesting permission to use the Fairhope Civic Center for the wives' dinner on October 5, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. This is a thank you to all of our firefighters, significant others, for putting up with the worries while we are running calls, supporting our great city. Request is for the City Council to waive the fee for using the Civic Center. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seven hours is going to be a long dinner. I just want to say that, considering the request, Mr. Pelucci is probably for more than his wife putting up with him, running calls, supporting the great city. You're welcome, Mark. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the request, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, request is granted, thank you, counsel. Item 27 is a request from Shannon Hesse, the MMOR Committee Chairperson, requesting approval to have their annual Mystic Mutts of Reverie Pet Parade fundraiser in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, February 23, 2019, to allow the streets to be closed, and we edited that in a work session to TBD. It says the hours requested on the application are from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I believe we just leave that TBD right now, and we'll come back and grant the closure of the streets when we've decided with them upon a different time that day. I'll entertain a motion to grant that request as stated?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the request, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, public participation regarding agenda items or non-agenda items, if you have anything else to bring before the council, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will tell you that after public participation, we do plan to go into executive session for approximately an hour. I don't know that we will come out and make a motion. There's a possibility that we would come out and make a motion after executive session to potentially authorize the mayor or someone to negotiate the purchase of some property. This would not be something that would be, I think, upsetting to anybody in the audience, but I just want to let you know that that may possibly be discussed after executive session.